Okay. You're gonna call us to order? We have a quorum. And I'd like everybody to stand while I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Alright. First up, we have an adjustment to the agenda. We need to add number 11 to our agenda at the end for an executive session. Um, for personnel discussion.
Finding information. Uh, she just provides the full list of reasons for the executive session.
Yes. Yes.
It says it has to be one of the things on this list, personnel's not on it, so I saw two possible.
Okay, so.
One of your compensation officials appoint as employees where privacy is necessary, or employment of employees where privacy is necessary, that won't be one of them.
Employment and employees.
Is that?
Employment of employees. So would you read that whole one for us, Jonathan, please, so that we're legal?
So it would be the adj-? I guess I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to amend point three, which currently reads add fault point 11 executive session pursuant to MRSA 4056A personnel. And the change would be from personnel to employment of officials, appointees, and employees. Same statute of MRSA 4056A. And the explanation is public officials, employees, or employees if public discussion could damage reputation or violate right and privacy.
Awesome. One second. Do I have any discussion around that? All in favor? Thank you.
Now that was to address. Now you have to make a motion to adopt.
Now. Do I have a motion to adopt the change in our agenda? Doug will make a motion. Do I have anybody to second that? Second, Christopher. Any discussion around that? Alright, all in favor? Okay. Next is the approval of the agenda as it stands now with the adjustments. Give everybody a moment to look through it again. It's a long one tonight. Thank you, Jonathan. Go have a second. Thank you, Doug. Any discussion around our agenda this evening? All in favor? Thank you. Approval of school committee meetings. We've had a few meetings. Shall we do these one at a time? First one being July 3rd, 2025.
Motion to accept.
Second? Do I have any discussion around July 3rd, 2025 again, or, I'm sorry, minutes? No? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Next one would be the July 8th, 2025.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Doug seconds. Anybody have any questions or concerns around those minutes? Nope? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Alright. July 3rd, I'm sorry, July 23rd, 2025.
Motion to accept.
To accept. Second? Any discussion around these minutes? All in favor? Alright, thank you everyone. Alright, moving right along. Public comment, 10 minutes. Do I have any public comments at this time? Is the?
I brought it in here. I think you're behind Sarah.
Oh, there's nothing on it? There's something on it?
Did anybody want to sign up for public comment?
We have two tonight, one at the beginning and one at the end.
Found the agenda. Found the agenda though.
We'll wait a moment to pass them all out. Alright, are we ready? So no public comment at this time? Alright, thank you. Leadership updates. We don't know if John's here tonight.
We don't have John. His report is in front of you. Basically, the downstairs in elementary school, the special school title payment was completed in the lower level. The fire equipment and kitchen inspections are all completed. The fire alarm inspections have been scheduled for August. There's a new pre-k fence for their playground area that's completed. There's a new pre-k bathroom that was installed. It started on July 29th. The electrical outlets in the feed for the up flush toilet system could begin by the end of the week. The safe space was requested for room 104 at the elementary school. It's been framed out and padded walls have been specially ordered. I would add that the state just approved our application to fund that pre-k bathroom, which was expected, but very nice to get that email today. Because things aren't always as you expect that they will be. The middle high school, they've done, they've removed the bleachers. They've removed the old gym floor. The new floor will go in first and then hoops will be installed. The tennis courts are reconditioned and resurfaced and they're painted with tennis lines as well. Pickle bowl lines, so pretty exciting for the community. Siemens began their filter change out the last week of July 28th. So we've done our specialist assessments. I executed the annual mechanical services grant for HVAC with Siemens. Looks like we're getting a new boiler. This one's new to me, I didn't know, but that's great. The district will be receiving a brand new boiler at the high school. Bus inspections have been scheduled. Summer roofing maintenance has been delayed until we adopt the new budget on September 4th. And all the elevator inspections have been scheduled. So things are moving right along. We're psyched about the gym and the pre-k room.
You know what was done with the old gym floor?
It was unloaded outside and then community members were invited to help themselves to wood if they wanted it. And then it's probably gone now, Sarah?
I haven't checked. It's gone.
It's gone.
Was that like the floor that like? How many generations have played on that?
It's been there since 1961.
It did not come up as clean as I thought. I was gonna say, we should have cut it up into small pieces and sent it to alumni. Yeah.
Alumni was informed.
Oh, okay.
So people knew and we put it on Facebook and I don't know, I know some, I saw some trucks pulling out of the high school parking lot with wood. But it didn't come up nicely because the subfloor was twice as thick as what they, or an inch thicker than what they expected. And so they had to bring in this big like cutting thing to cut it. It was, it was a big deal.
Lots of nails on it and
Tons of nails.
Finished lots of layers.
Yeah.
Do not envision a nice cutting board.
Okay. Alright. Any other comments on? Or questions on our report? Guys, next up is food service.
Food service and Lori also needed to be excused tonight, so she's all set for the school year. We've got our 43% free and reduced rate for the CEP program. And she's keeping an eye on funding in case anything should happen to the federal school loan program.
I'm looking, wanna see if he stands for it.
It's the eligibility. I can't think of the C, but eligibility provisions. It's all the people that are on, it's the direct certification list for main care and SNAP and benefits. So once upon a time, we did free and reduced school lunch forms and the states, you could still do that, but we opted to go away from that because people weren't completing them since everybody gets free breakfast and free lunch. So there's this alternative method for coming up with that percentage, the CEP rate. The rate is important because it qualifies us for a lot of funding and grants.
Okay. Any other questions around food service? Alright. Um, high school. Middle high school, I'm sorry.
Um, let's see, we're just getting ready for the school year. Next week, information will be heading out to families, welcome letter, all the information in that. Everything from where to drop your kid off, to schedules, to red day, black day. Working on the handbooks, staff handbook, as well as student handbook, which you have, I believe, tonight. I know my minutes or my report says September, but expedite that so you get it before the school year starts. And I know we're also on the agenda talking about grants, so I just want to talk more about the community health improvement fund grant that's through Maine Health that I referenced here. And then we also have some new teachers joining us this year and working with Kim on how we want to structure middle school so it's a smoother transition for kids from fifth to sixth grade. We'll have two teachers teaching our sixth graders. So one teacher will teach science and math, who's our new, one of our new middle school teachers. And another teacher teaching ELA and social studies. And then we have a new teacher in the middle school teaching seventh and eighth grade social studies. We also have a new high school math teacher and a new school counselor. So all, all people that, when I ask why they want to work, it was casted, they all had a very specific reason. It wasn't, oh, I casted a net to see what I can catch. They all wanted to be in our school. So that's, that's the best feeling you can have, so.
Because of why? Because of the outdoor learning, right?
Well, that was part of it, project-based learning, but one was because they heard Becky Hollowell speak, one is because we recognize veterans. The other one was, let's see, that, oh, lives in town, another person lives in town. And the one, Kim interviewed the other one, so I don't.
She was excited about the experiential learning program that we're doing. The boat, the boat and other things, yeah.
Is ELA a degree?
ELA is English Language Arts.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, reading.
Not to be confused with ELO, it's due in October 7th.
My first album of all time was an ELO album, bought it at the Kmart.
What do I do then?
Alright. Elementary school.
Alright, who's here? I have first, I feel like I need to give a shout out to John's team. It was not easy for them in here this summer with two summer camps and a giant construction project. But they somehow managed to wax all the things and move a lot of stuff very quickly. So very appreciative of them and their patience with all the moving parts this summer. Ditto. Yeah, it's, it was not an easy gig for them this summer and I appreciate, and it was a million degrees, so they rock. Same as Sarah, just getting ready for the school year, finalizing handbooks, schedules, all that good stuff. You have my handbook. We made a little bit of an adjustment to drop off procedure for pre-k with the new location of the pre-k classroom. Parents can now drop off in the back directly, so kids will go right into their classroom in pre-k. So they're not wandering the halls and it's a little bit more direct for the little ones. Super excited about the new fence. Head Start provided the fence for us and we're collab with them for pre-k. And actually, they're having some sandbox sand delivered this week to go in the new sandbox that we got through the state. So we've got some of the equipment started. There's still a long ways to go moving all of Samantha's things into the pre-k room. So they have the work cut out for them, but the space looks awesome. And I'm irrationally excited about the toilet being the kind that you manually flush, not the auto flush. Because pre-kers are definitely afraid of that auto flush. So we get to avoid putting sticky notes over it, which is pretty exciting.
Not just pre-kers. Right, I make them too when I'm dirty.
So you'll like that one?
I do love that.
Um, we're excited, teachers are starting to come back, they can get their keys now. We had them turn their keys in to avoid the chaos of the summer. We had a popsicles and play event for our incoming pre-k kindergarten families today that was pretty well attended even though it was a million degrees. Next year, I will make that at 9:00 AM instead of 10:00. And it highlighted the need for some shade, so working with Sarah to borrow some pop-up tents from the high school to put on the playground to start the school year, so we have some shade. Which will be awesome, so thank you, Sarah.
Do you think you'll have enough of those?
Sorry, say that again?
Do you think you will have enough of those?
Um, I'm not sure. We'll see what's in stock first.
And she said, um, we have some leftover from COVID. Okay. So I'm gonna be big, so.
Alright, good. I have a couple of 10 by 10s if all else fails.
Oh, cool, thank you.
Contact me.
I will, for sure.
We'll be able to figure it out this weekend.
Alright.
Yeah, that's, it highlighted the need for shades up, for sure.
Yeah.
There was like parents hiding like the crevices where they could get like a tiny bit of shade. I was like, alright, we need to do something about this. Um, we're super excited about our new hires. We've got a new second grade teacher who's, was originally, she was an ed tech in Andrea's program. Sorry, Andrea. But we are really excited to have her in second grade. We've got two ed techs joining us in pre-k. One coming down from the high school from Andrea again, sorry Andrea. Sorry, guys. Really excited about her. And then Head Start's providing a different ed tech for us and she's actually a certified pre-k teacher. So she can step in and take over if Samantha needs to be out, so that's really exciting. She's also safety care trainer, like we've, we've got the deck really stacked in pre-k and I'm feeling really good about that. Yeah, so I'm just excited to start the school year.
Thank you. Any questions for? I guess we didn't ask Sarah the questions either. Any questions for Sarah or Stacy? Alright.
Well, now I see why Andrea's reports is looking for two ed techs.
Andrea, you're up.
Sorry, Andrea.
Do you have a copy of my report? I was on vacation last week, so I got it literally. Well, I don't have a copy, I can just go from memory, but thank you. I'm appreciative of that. So special ed doesn't slow down in the same way that Jenna does in the summertime. We just completed summer school, which also served as extended school year. And the, and the teachers did a great job. They were rating about how great the kids were. They did themes, camping themes, all kinds of different things. And at the very last day, someone brought in some goats. And it was so fun to see the kids interact with the animals. I know this isn't in my report, but it was so cute. This one little boy had a goat on a leash and the goat wouldn't move because sometimes goats don't move. And he kept saying, giddy up, giddy up. It was just great. It was sweet. The kids were happy to come to school this summer. So I'm really grateful. We are one of the districts where people do want to work in the summer. A lot of districts really struggle to fill those positions for ES line. I've talked to directors where they have nobody who wants to do it. So I think it's a credit to the way the team works together. So that was really good. So that was four weeks in July, finished that up. What also happens in the summer, anyone who's moving into the district, they want, you know, I usually meet them, talk to them. You know, get, get a handle on meeting the students rather than getting to know them by just what we see on paper. And I did work with a student this summer, which I don't usually do, so I was. We are still looking for one ed tech, not pointing fingers, but but those, those, those two positions are gonna really benefit the school as a whole. So I'm thrilled for them, I'm thrilled for us, you know, but we do need one more ed tech. We're looking for an ed tech two or three. And partly because we've had some changes and the need has changed. So we definitely will need specifically for life skills at the high schools. Physical therapists, we are advertising for an in-person physical therapist. Very difficult to find a physical therapist. The rules have changed, so now they're required to have a doctorate and they used to be required to have a masters. And it's, it's hard to find the doctorate level. It didn't work out the way they had envisioned when they changed the requirements. So I think there just aren't any. So we're using Kiddo therapy, but they're down a couple therapists. So we are looking. And if you know any great physical therapists who want to work, it's part of the great team, let us know. We have a behavior teacher, which is really, really exciting. This person is going to rock. So that is very exciting. And that's it. We're all collaborating on safety care to get our people trained. We have some trainers in the district. And I think we're looking to train as many people as we can. And that's a DS relation techniques and just keeping kids safe. If you have to do a therapeutic restraint, knowing exactly how to do that safely. And that's really important, so we're working on that together. It's not just special ed, it's gen ed and special ed by law. Do you have any questions or? We have a new school psychologist. I'm thrilled. She's already started working. I loved our old one, but she, she retired. This person is gonna bring a different flavor to our team. She's already doing assessment, she's already, I'm here really positively. She's very student focused, family focused. So she's already hit the ground running, so I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy about that. And that's pretty much it unless someone has a specific question.
Okay, all good?
Thank you.
Alright. Kim, you're up.
Um, I actually did get a report from Brandon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not on your agenda, so I'll just include this under my superintendent umbrella athletics. So Brandon says we've got Julie Jones coaching volleyball. She's a Wisconsin resident who has a sand volleyball pit, called pit court in her yard and runs just a lot of volleyball there. It's pretty neat. I've started following more on Facebook and she's an amazing person who just loves volleyball. And this is gonna be our first year as an official MPA member. The new gym will have volleyball court. Yeah.
Lines?
Yeah, right, so that will benefit people sitting in the bleachers. I think it's, it's gonna be all set up and very official. Our girls, our team was undefeated last year as a club, so we're, we're looking strong for a great volleyball year. Chelsea Taylor is coaching girls soccer and they're looking to head back up to the playoffs, I'm sweating in this report. James Andretta is gonna be taking on boys soccer. And we're gonna, heading into year two of having a high school varsity team this year with almost everyone coming back and key freshmen headed up. So we're excited. And then Phil DeBees is joining us for middle school soccer. We're gonna be doing eight-man soccer on the bus line league and Phil will be coaching both teams. All of the schedules are online. Come and support our teams.
How many are usually in soccer?
Nine.
Eleven.
Eleven. That's sporty.
Nine. Eight men, like eight men, how is that different than more?
I know, it's funny, I was an A D in Searsport and I really lean heavily on sportier people. Okay, so in my report, we brought the stipend committee together, I wanted to mention that. It's kind of a precursor to the negotiations we'll be going into next summer, a year from now. Hopefully, we'll be well on our way to being done with the new collective bargaining agreements. Part of the teachers agreement is a stipend section, which at the close of '23, we agreed to work on stipends, not really on an ongoing basis, but that's what it's turned into. And so we are still working on our stipend and getting that stuff done. The next thing, budget. It's on the agenda later for an update, but really the update is September 4th from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM is the budget validation referendum at the community center. Please get the word out for people to know that they need to go and either vote for or against the budget. The budget does not move forward unless it passes on September 4th. And, and if it does not pass on September 4th, we continue using the budget that we passed on July 23rd and do it again. Marine Learning Project just wrapped up five weeks of sea bearing camp. That's the, our collaboration with the Wisconsin School Department and this nonprofit, the Marine Learning Project. It was five weeks of sailing. And the last day was last Friday. Amazing experience for all the students from around the state who were involved. We had a handful of Wisconsin kids and then kids from all over the state. I was able to go out in the, in the skiff one night and meet the, the kids when they were done by St. George and talk to them on board with the director of enrollment and admissions at the Maine Maritime Academy. And a young lady gave me a tour of all of the watches and took me like out to Jackson's Bilge and took me into the engine room, which a big sailboat does have because it must move around. It was fascinating and life-changing for each one of those kids. SE, our Elementary and Secondary Education Act application was filed on time. So that was pretty exciting. And the federal government has released, there, there was some question about whether they would hold back federal funds that were already promised by Congress. Yeah, anyway, and that they're not holding them. Those funds have been released for titles one, two, and four as appropriated. The dropout prevention committee had its first meeting and we're going to be having a second meeting next Tuesday on August 19th. We've identified a community member and a student who, we don't want to use drop, the word dropout. We're actually going, changing the name to the Student Retention Committee. And we have a student who did leave high school early, who's gonna join the committee too. And a community member, yeah. We are still looking for a gifted and talented teacher and we have an anticipated interim art teacher. The head bus driver and transportation and facilities director positions are both still on hold. I didn't put in student count numbers because they're not in yet. There are, I, I pulled the report on Friday and was like startled by the number and then said, do we have enrollments to enter? And everybody did. So I will update this as enrollments are entered. And just based on the number of superintendent agreements I signed for kids choosing Wisconsin from primarily Dresden, I'm hoping our numbers are gonna be up a little bit. We also had some good feedback. We had kids who had left to go to Lincoln, who are leaving Lincoln to come back to us. So things are going well in that area. MECO Superintendent Region, we are hosting on August 27th, it's the first Teachers' Day. And so we, Wisconsin, along with six other districts in the MECO area, are sending all of their teachers up to Camden in the morning to hear a two and a half hour talk with this guy Weston Kitchnick. He's an amazing motivational speaker. And we'll be together, all together, a group of about 600 teachers in their gym and or down their gym, they have a beautiful theater, we'll be in the theater. And I'm excited about that. My husband's the food service director in Camden, so he will be providing our breakfast. I said, I don't want continental breakfast, so hopefully it'll be nice. We will actually be offering a continental breakfast here for our staff on the 28th, but it'll be baked with love. So that's my report.
Anyone have any questions for Kim?
Just with the Marine Learning Project, hindsight now, but maybe going the next year. Do we have a process for, I know like you can hear, if somebody wants volunteer, coach, teach, you parents want to go to the background checks, they have to throw that out. Do we do that same thing for the staff that serve on boat?
Yes.
Or some handicap?
Yeah, yeah, and that was like a sticking point for me. And there was even one point where some of the volunteer coordinators at Marine Learning Project were like, we didn't realize we had to do that, can we just sail this year and not do that? And I was like, if you're gonna do that, Wisconsin's out, like we can't participate. And they want us to participate because they want to gift this boat to all of the public school students in the state of Maine. And they landed on Wisconsin, they want us to be that connection. So then I, I, it was actually on July 23rd and I didn't have time to like try and talk to them or be diplomatic. I was like just very brief because we had our budget meeting. I was like, if, if this happens, Wisconsin will remove itself from the, from this. And the next morning, my inbox was like full. No, 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 we get it, we understand, we'll work, we'll make this work. So yeah.
No, I'm asking on that, it's the same line, we're looking at physical inspection of the boat, they provide certification to coast.
Oh, yeah, the Coast Guard.
And annual inspector, whatever, Coast Guard certification.
Yep, and it's under the Coast Guard. It's, it is a SSV, which stands for school sailing vessel. Yep, and but it has, it needs to have a COI, that's what I'm talking about, that's in for, it was a big deal when we got it, from the Coast Guard.
So do you need another ten?
Perhaps. Some kind of thing, but yeah, it's all, and then in fact, there's this guy up in. there's this guy up in, Dan Moreland, excuse me, from Victorin Castle, which is an organization out of Nova Scotia that has been in charge of hiring and placing captains. So the professional crew is all highly respected, certified captains and crew. They all hold their Coast Guard certifications, they all get drug tested, and they all have to pass a background check.
Any other questions?
Is he not, is he a little bit report proper with Step for Success, is there any support needed for that?
So Step for Success is actually, thank you for bringing that up. That should be something that is announced, it is this Sunday. And so where the school is in tremendous recipient of Step for Success, we don't really, we volunteer a little bit to help run it, but this is not a school-sponsored event, it's sponsored by volunteers in our community. And I do know that if there are people who are available to help move stuff on Saturday, August 16th, from the high school to the community center, they would be really grateful, because many hands make light work and they've got tons and tons of items. And if everybody's not familiar with Step for Success, it's a big day that takes place in the gym at the community center where all of the students in West Cassette, pre-K, the 12th, can get all of the school supplies that they need. Step for Success coordinates with teachers and school administration to get list, supply lists, and then purchase all of those materials. This is funded largely by Ladies Who Bake, you know, the bake sales, they have them in Ames and the amazing Gretchen Burley Johnson, who's done so much for our community because she's just completely selfless and just wants to make it better. So she's behind all of these things, she's a driving force. And yeah, they would be open to anyone who wanted to volunteer. So if you're interested, I can get Jolie Hardwood to contact you, she's a volunteer, she will come.
They also do like fun things outside of the extra school supplies, they'll do haircuts.
Yeah.
Call to the county will be there, first time will be there. They have free meals for the kids, they get to sit on a school bus, they do like touch a truck, fly a truck, it's a police cruiser. It's like quite the event.
It's a big day and super exciting, I'll be there all day someday.
I go, I go to the hall every year, the event, I correct everybody, stop by and check it out.
Yeah, it's really neat.
It is.
Library is doing something, yes, we have a, yes, we do have a table. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be the person at that table this year. Oh, you're, yes, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
All right, where are we at? We are at discussion of items, old business, first discussion is consolidation possibilities. Last meeting, we asked him to look at some of these things.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Why do you have to tell us?
Well, very preliminary, because we're not, we're not doing anything as of yet, just collecting information. But I did reach out to the commissioner and they referred me to chapter 103A subsection 1461, which is how you form a regional school unit. This town's actually been through that before, when we formed a regional school unit together with our friends in the north, now our friends R212. So, but the steps are detailed and lengthy. So the first thing that you have to do, if you wanna think about planning such a thing, is file notice of intent with the Commissioner of Education stating what the plans are. And it would need to be West Cassette and another municipality, at least one. And then the commissioner responds to that, and in their response, they provide specific requirements that need to be met, and they give you a specific plan of what you have to do when you create your reorganization planning committee. So step two is you create your reorganization planning committee based on the guidelines that the commissioner provides in her response to the notice of intent. They include things like ensuring representation from school administrative units, member municipalities, members of the general public who are residents of the proposed regional school unit. She provides the roles and responsibilities of the committee members, a timeline for submission of the plan, the format for reporting the reorganization plan, and the evaluation criteria for approval of the plan. So once you get those things, you can write your plan, just like when you apply for a grant, you go step by step, this is what they wanted to see, you make sure you hit all of those things and you get a name.
Now, if we, if we start this process and start meeting and decide, this isn't for us, we can back out at any time?
Yes.
Okay.
So once you have your reorganization planning committee, you've gotta have at least one public meeting to gather input. I would imagine that every municipality should have a public meeting to gather input and probably more than one. Yep. So then you create your plan, the plan needs to include the units of the school administration to be included in the proposed reorganized regional school unit, the size, composition, and apportionment of the governing body, so you have to plan your school board, the method of voting of the government body, the composition powers and duties of any local school committees to be created, the disposition of real and personal school property, the disposition of existing school indebtedness and lease purchase obligations. And that refers to another section of the law, which I scanned through it. It basically says the debt stays with the original unit unless agreed upon according to guidelines listed out there. The assignment of school personnel contracts, collective bargaining agreements, and other contractual obligations, the disposition of existing school funds and existing financial obligations, including the undesignated fund balance, trust funds, reserve funds, and other funds appropriated for school purposes. West Cassette's got a fat fund balance and no one else does. So we would wanna guard that and keep, you know, there's a reason not everyone's in our position, like we're doing pretty well. A transition plan that addresses the development of a budget for the first school year. So you have to figure out your budget for the first year, and interim personnel policies, documentation from your public meetings that were held to prepare the plan, an explanation of how the units that approved the reorganization plan will proceed if one or more of the members fail to approve the plan, so every town has to approve it. An estimate of the cost savings that would be achieved by forming it and how they would be achieved. And such other matters that govern, that the governing bodies of the SAUs determine to be necessary. The rules state that in the first year of a new plan, a new RSU or regional plan, you can't close any buildings or eliminate any personnel, so you have to consider that. So then you get your plan, you send it to the commissioner, she reviews it to make sure it meets the requirements. And if it's approved, she will then provide the permission back to each municipality. And then each municipality has to hold a referendum. So then the town select boards, and that's not the school, this would have to be done by the towns. They would, each one would have a referendum and the language is specific. It is, do you favor approving the school administrative reorganization plan prepared by the insert name, reorganization planning committee to reorganize, insert the names of affected school administrative units or SAUs into a regional school unit or AOS with an effective date of blank, yes or no? So you have that, if it's a simple majority, so if everybody approves the plan, every state, then the, all of the results, whether they're yes or no, gets sent back to the commissioner. And then the commissioner's still satisfied, everybody's approved. She would then forward that approval to the state board of education, who issue a certificate of organization. And then you would probably, you would hold your elections to fill the seats of the school board that you had designed in your plan. And I remember going through this when we joined up in RSU 12. And there was a six-month period where we had an RSU 12 school board running at the same time as all of the member municipal school boards. So I sat on both the RSU 12 school board and the West Cassette school board for that six-month period. And you hire interns superintendent, there's like a lot, there's a lot. So it would take, I actually asked Lindsay Johnson, who just created RSU 48 in Damerskada, this afternoon, and I was like, how long did that all take you? Because that was pretty, they broke up their AOS and everybody was happy to do that and it made sense. So I think theirs was pretty quick, it only, I think that only took two years. So that is what I found so far.
Does anyone have any questions or thoughts?
And I'm not an expert, this is all stuff that I found in statute and from Dan, the deputy commissioner, and I talked to Paula, the DOE.
Is that like a handout or posted online anywhere, or you just read? Oh, thank you, my hero.
And it will be posted online with all of this point backs from.
So here, four communities, you have to develop a plan for all four, you have to develop this separate planning case, B drops out, but the others, C drops out.
You would have to include in your plan what, the steps that you would take in case, you know, if, let's just say it was Dresden and Boot Bay and Woodbury Harbor and West Cassette and everybody votes to approve it except West Cassette, West Cassette votes it down, because we've been in an RSU and we hated that, then the plan would have to include the steps that the other towns would take in that case. So all of that stuff needs to be planned before the commissioner will approve the plan.
And RSU is the only way to go, there's no other way to combine schools as populations need?
There is, there is, and I was just talking to Bob Keeler about that this afternoon on the phone, and we'll talk more about it, we talked about the regional nine to 16 grant that's on your agenda to look at. And I, it's what Hammond Hills High School is and it's what Boot Bay High School is. It's a, it's a CSAD, Consolidated School Administrative District. And, and I don't have the research on how to form one of those, but I think that is in the case that you have one secondary school that's serving multiple towns. So perhaps we could create something like that for West Cassette and some neighbors. But today I could just tell you about the regional school unit.
So I think I personally would like to hear about that model as well as the nine through 16 model, so that we, we have some ideas as to what else is out there. Because as you said, the RSU is something that's been tried here before and I know that not many people in the town are delighted with the thought of doing that again.
That is what your nine to 16 school would be, be a regional school.
Yeah, yes.
So.
Well, and I think, I think we need to know what the options are that are out there and what those steps are that we take for those different options, because.
Yes.
I think we're going to be. Has the select board met about future of West Cassette school yet? Okay. But I think it's coming down the pipe, so we might wanna have all the information necessary.
But is the CSAD even addressing the future of this work? I'm trying to remember whether it was mentioned.
No, no. I don't know. I don't know.
We might wanna have info about all of our possible, what is, what are the possibilities out there? Because we don't wanna miss a possibility because we've focused into close up to one, at least in my opinion. Does anybody have a differing opinion around that? I wanna go in with eyes wide open if we're doing this, I don't wanna just jump and then look later. So, so it's all great for everybody.
Sounds really great.
So, and I'd rather look at it all and go, no, none of it works, than to not have an avenue and have it be something that we missed. Sir?
Uh, just for clarification, Kim said she spoke with Mr. Keeler, Bob Keeler? Is that somebody from the state to talk about an RSU?
No.
Bob Keeler?
No, it's not from the state. He's the superintendent of Boot Bay, A of 98.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Bob Keeler, Howie Tuttle, RSU 12, all the superintendents like talk on a pretty regular basis. Like we are always meeting, talking, sometimes daily.
But you said, you stated that you spoke about the RSU.
Spoke to him about the nine to 16 grant.
Nine through 16 more, RSU more.
It's the, it's the big grant everyone's been talking about for a couple of months around town. I know, I'm aware of a couple of community groups that have been talking about this plan.
The Boot Bay School Board just voted tonight to have their superintendent Bob Keeler meet with you to try to hit the October deadline. So that's happened at the exact moment you guys are meeting.
Well, it's on your agenda.
Yeah, it's coming up.
To give me authorization to do that.
All right. Any other questions around the information we've been given tonight? All right. Next is budget process. We wanted to go over the process around the budget and what is still out there to improve it.
What is still out there is September 4th, I said it before, I'm gonna say it again because we really need to reiterate September 4th, September 4th, September 4th, go to polls, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, West Cassette Community Center. It's gonna be the same, simple yes or no vote. And a yes vote is what I hope for, a no vote, if it happens, we'll start the process again with another special town meeting. And we just keep doing that over and over until we improve one.
Do you know if there's anything else on that referendum?
There is nothing else on that referendum, it's a weird date, it's a Thursday. So it's just special for this and it had to be that day because it had to be before 45 days passed and there had to be time for absentee ballots, so that is the day, it's a weird day and no one will think to go vote that day, unless we tell them. To tell your friends, tell your friends.
All right. Anyone have any other questions about budget report, about the budget process route? All right, next up is committees report. I go first. Policy did meet about a week ago now. We went through looking at what policies we had tabled and had some discussion around those and put them up again as first reads. We also looked through the policies to see what, which ones were coming due for review, but also that needed to kind of be done in a timely manner for the start of the school year. So those are the ones that you see down here, policy first reads down further. So we did go through and look at the needs of the school community to try to figure out which ones were best to start with. So that's how we start up our year, was to look at logistics and what we were gonna do when. So that was our first policy meeting. Our next policy meeting will be to review these policies and to rewrite as necessary so that we can present them as second reads at the next policy, or the next school board meeting. Does anybody have any questions around that? And I guess I should go back. Policies, we look at policies that are five years or older, I believe, five years is the cut line. Were we doing three now? Okay, so. But I think we, I think we look at them in a timely manner. Five stuck in my head that it might be every three years, because we did look at a list, we pulled a list of, whatever it was, it just went out of it in front of me. So we do have an achievable list, but it's ones that were looked at several years ago and rewritten at that point, and we want to review them to make sure that they're current. So that's how we first go about looking at policies, we wanna make sure that we're bringing them up to current date. But the next thing we also look at is if there's anything that's a question within the school community that we might wanna look at.
I know it's the volunteer field trips are on there and I know they get this question like immediately when school starts. Should we follow that procedure right now for volunteers? Or do you want us to wait and just not have anybody do anything until you guys have a chance?
No, no, don't we?
Yeah, no.
Do things.
We probably follow this old procedure.
Yes, please follow the old procedure until we come up with another one and we'll, we'll make sure you have that info once it.
Yeah, we'll come out in our like back to school packet information for parents to start getting it put on.
We are trying to do it in a timely manner and I'm sorry, we probably should have done that at the end of the school year. So, but we are trying to keep up with what I think the needs of, you know, what you guys need to. So um, but we are trying to keep up with what I think the needs of, you know, what you guys need to.
Thank you.
Um. So does anybody have any questions about how we do policy and how they come up for review and when they come up for review? Help it. All right. Um, next is finance committee.
Yes.
And I was, I missed it. I saw my email. Sorry. Emergency, I was on patrol yesterday. I had emergency minute at five thirty in the morning until it was eight o'clock last night. I was on a Google ten. However, I've done a ton of research from some of the school boards and got some of the templates that they use like finance report monthly. So I'd like to bring up next meeting and go through those, see if we want to adopt something similar or revise it to work for us. So then we have something prepared.
I would love to see a financial report at the school board meeting. That would be great. Wonderful. Any, any questions or comments on finance? Okay, we're changing that one. Student retention committee.
Did you want to speak to the committee since you were there?
Uh, no, I want to describe it and I'll.
So we had the first meeting and according to the policy, the first meeting was to identify a um a student who left school early and a a community member. Um, and so we identified those two people and then set a date for the next meeting. So then when we get together next Tuesday morning, also by Zoom, we did the meeting by Zoom because it's summer and I didn't want everyone to come into the office. Um, we will uh look at some specific information. The committee asked me to um find out about our retention rates um and how retention rates are calculated by the state, what's reported out, what's the difference between a four-year student and a five-year student and how how they measure up, um a couple of other metrics. So I'll have that information prepared um for that meeting Tuesday morning and then we'll meet and then discuss. We will discuss what um goals they're going to recommend, the policy committee will will recommend um to this committee. Not the policy committee, the student retention committee. And then um hopefully you'll have some recommendations in September. If not, you'll have an update in September. That is Roland.
All right. Anything else for our student retention committee? Questions? Any questions?
Uh.
Well, go right. Oh, no, no, we will before school starts. I just haven't called a meeting yet.
Especially if it's our pets all day. On the can be like firing mess all those days.
Yes.
Right, so that will probably be September.
Well, I would like us to meet before school starts. I just need to get on the tomorrow. There's been a lot going on.
Yes. All right, um, next up, um last meeting, um Jonathan and Doug had suggested a community engagement and involvement committee. And I asked them to come up with kind of some outline around what that would be and what it would imply.
Uh, oh, pretty far from meeting. I think weird, our idea is to shift gears away from a committee and either go like we said, network designate from the board. But our idea is more of reaching out to Pi, boosters, uh your community groups to help support the school and the community on a monthly basis. Kind of almost like an admin report from an eligibility criteria. And then the designate can come back monthly and say, hey, Pi did this this month. This is what they use for support. This is what boosters did. This is what they use for support.
So a liaison kind of situation.
Yeah. Better work in the, that's me. A liaison between the community groups and the board because I also get a fairly needy full committee where we meet once a month, discuss community involvement, we have somebody designated as a liaison to those groups who makes a point every month, reach out to them on a phone call, fancy yell, say, hey, when you guys have one for your fundraiser, when you guys have one for your boosters club. Working together on a list together of community-based groups like Pi or boosters and then each take one, then we come either find one back to the chair or let me bring some technical report, kind of like an admin report monthly versus having a whole committee.
All right, so.
Suggestions.
Sarah, can you not hear what?
Well, it sounds like a great idea and I just didn't, I just didn't want to miss the details.
So what's been proposed is that we have a school board liaison who gets in touch with the different, not the reports that we get from you all, but the different organizations that help your community so that we can get a report from that liaison as to Pi is doing this for the next month. And this is what's coming up in December for them. Or um, am I correct? Am I getting this right?
Yes.
Or um or the boosters. This is what the boosters have going on. This is where they could use some help. This is what, so that kind of liaison person to the board.
Yeah, I'd be happy to give you a list as well. Like Hardy Roots, we're doing a lot with them this year. Um, of course Maine Health and all that stuff. I think that's great. Community engagement should should be a thing we do and I think we actually do it really well. We just don't have anything formal. This one needs another committee. But if you guys want to do that work, go right ahead, but uh I think that's a great idea to get that.
So as a liaison before to to the committee.
I know each one of those committees would be delighted to have you come and sit in their meeting because Pi is always looking for people to participate. Boosters is always looking for people to participate, South for Success, always looking for people to participate. So if you guys wanted to put another meeting on your docket, that would be.
There's a lot of great community involved already. Just having a liaison from the board, that information would come back here, hey, what do they need for support? What are they already doing? So we're all informed, we can help support those.
Sure, they would help have something rallying and spreading the word of the work that they're doing too.
So I think the next step would be exactly that. Um, so I'm going to hand that back. Come up with a list, come up with uh this would be the responsibilities of that liaison so that we can then bridge that and see what that looks like. We would have to vote on it to finalize it that we actually want to create that. But I would like to see that kind of fleshed out as to who we would be communicating with and what exactly would be our policy liaison.
Feel free to reach out to myself and um Stacy.
This one over here.
I didn't see any of your teachers. And uh we can give you a list and I know because um one thing I have found is that when organizations such as Hardy Roots, Healthy Lincoln County, when they can show they have community support uh grant funding, that helps with grant applications.
Absolutely.
Sometimes it's not just um school support, other people's support.
Yeah. Absolutely. All right, someone, thank you. So we will report on that again next month and see what we have as an actual plan. All right, distribution of draft school committee calendar.
You have the draft school committee calendar. Um, and I don't think you can vote to approve it until after the second read of uh school board meetings, BE, but I would like to post it on the website as a draft. I don't think I did that yet, but I want to do that and the the public has asked for us to do that, so. But I don't think you can approve it until you change your policy and it's a first read for tonight. So you guys.
Let's motion to allow Kim to put this up as a draft until the policy reflects what changes we have made in our calendar because the policy stated certain days. So now we need to change that to the wording that the school board will decide what days are appropriate for them to need in their policies. So, but we haven't done that yet because it's first read still. So um I am going to motion that we allow Kim to put this up as a draft so the public knows what we're planning on. But it will not be official until such a time as the policy has been changed. I know, I, but I have to do it in the timeframe allowed to me. So um, but it is coming up. It's the first thing we're doing. Second, do we have any other discussion around this? Is everybody comfortable with us doing this as a draft? All right, all in favor? Thank you. All right, um nomination for MSBA delegate. Does. Uh, yes, those would, those would need to be added in as we decide upon those.
I guess so, yeah. They're standing committees.
Yeah, so they would need to be public. Um, so yes, and once again, when we're forming the policy that we'll look at next time, we'll make sure that it shows that so that it is dependent on the needs of the committee.
For next meeting, is that that prepared?
Yes, that will be, that's, it's a first read, so we'll have that ready as a second read at the next meeting. And then once we approve it, we can put those to vote. Does that make sense to everybody? All right, where was I?
MSBA delegate.
MSBA delegate. Um, does anyone, would anyone like to step forward to be the MSBA delegate?
I'd say last time that I might, I didn't realize that I'm having a commitment to um impinge on my marriage.
Yeah. Um, so unfortunately, it was the same day as the Maker fundraiser for uh the Creative Alliance, which I'm a member of on the board, Christopher's wife, who's lead of Creative Alliance. So um.
I'm I'm willing to step up and participate in, like read through some of their stuff, gone through some of their past meetings. Um, where it's available down there, COVID one is remote by Zoom. Um, and it's on Saturday. I'm off Saturdays.
All right.
And it looks like annually they're, I'm off all Saturdays. I'm off Thursday, Friday, Saturday of the week. Um, so I can attend those meetings. We also have some summertime meetings as well. Uh, my schedule fluctuates in some ways. I'm working, kids, you know, so I have the availability to attend these meetings. Have to get just like another step of ordering. I feel like being a delegate to MSBA, I'll learn as much from them as we learn from them. Better than to bring back the words I've learned from that board.
That'd be wonderful.
I'm willing to step up. I don't need to. I'm absolutely hoping a bell that wants to step up. Some bells wants to be nominated.
All right, Doug is nominating Jonathan. Do I have a second for that? Okay. Any discussion around Jonathan being our MSBA delegate member? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, Jonathan, for stepping up. All right. Next, new business, grants.
All right, so the policy is that if we're going to apply for a grant that's over five thousand dollars, you guys need to authorize me to do that. And um I don't have specific details on any one of these except that I know they'll be, oh, Sarah can speak to the CHIF grant, but they'll be over five thousand dollars and the applications will be due in the coming weeks. The, let me take them one at a time and then I'll turn it over to Sarah for CHIF. Um, the Integrated Consolidated Nine to Sixteen Educational Facilities Program. This is the, you've heard about it before. Um, not everybody at this table was at the board when I reported on it a year ago, but this is um, it's a regional technical, secondary, um college level. That's why it's nine to sixteen.
So it's grades nine to sixteen, not like ages?
Nine to sixteen. And so it would be through high school and then um college and it's a technical school, so it'd be like a vocational technical center. And the grant is for a new new construction. So you would um need to go through a process of getting all of your partners. And the partners would be the impacted school administrative units to come together. And step one is a pre-application. It's due in October. And it needs to be signed off on by um the superintendents in the in the towns. And so there has been um for about six months, a group of citizens from area towns, including West Cassett, who have been meeting, talking about this this specific program. Um, and so now we've been um, you know, asked to make it a more formal process. So I would ask you to authorize me to talk to um Bob Keeler and or other um partners and work on that um first pre-application, which is due in October.
And once again, I'm going to ask if we do sign this and we decide that we do not want to go this route, we can back out of that.
Yes, we can.
We do not need to, this is not binding in any way.
It's not binding in any way. And in fact, the state has specific ideas about where they want to put this school. And um if they don't think that this is the place where they would want to put it, that's why they broke it into two steps. We are not going to have to do all of this work. This is just going to be, um, we'll, we'll say, these are the partners. This is, this is the mission. These are the goals. And here you go, state. And then the state will say, that's great. We'd love to see that in your area. Or they'll be like, um, no, thank you. You're not eligible. And then we're done. So I recommend you authorizing me to do that. The next one is um the School Revolving Renovation Fund was just made available. The state's got about thirteen million dollars um for small construction projects. We absolutely qualify and desperately need um a project in both buildings for safety and for ADA compliance. So um we had Stephen Blatt, an architect, come and tour both of our buildings along with um myself and John Mary. And um where, what we want to do is um the front office suites and entryways so that we can have a secure vestibule at both buildings with a window to into the main office so that when the public comes into our school, they don't get buzzed right into the whole building. They go into a secure vestibule and then they go to the window and talk to the the secretary in the office, who's like the the guard really of the school, the person who controls the door in or out. Um, and hopefully built into that application, we can um rework our office suites in both buildings because um they're not sufficient. They they don't work well. And so if we can pull this all together in a a small um construction, excuse me, renovation fund grant from the state, it would be really great. It would be awesome. The third one is N B R C Catalyst Program. This is um something new. And again, it's a two-step process. The first step is just to see if you qualify. And it is the Northern Border Regional Commission. Their catalyst program funds a number of things, including workforce development. And it was brought to my attention by um Stacy Kiefer of the um Marine Industries Coalition. It's like a nonprofit that handles marine industry things that um schools in Lincoln County could probably get funded for an education project um that did workforce training. Uh, and what we're looking at is maritime industry. So. It would tie in beautifully with all the things that we're doing and would provide funding. Um, as much as I love the Marine Learning Project, I don't think that we should ever ask local taxpayers to fund this. I think we need to fund it through grants if we continue to participate in the the planning, right? We're building ship as we sail it. But this would be um, August twenty-ninth is the pre-application. So if you authorize me to fill that in, I would work with um my partners at Marine Learning Project and the Marine Fund, Stacy Kiefer, to fill that in and just see if we would qualify. And then would be the next step. And then the last one, um are the CHIF Grants, um Community Health Initiative Fund.
Improvement Fund.
Community Health Improvement Fund. Uh, Sarah has largely been doing the CHIF grant applications over the past year. Do you want to speak to that?
Yep, and we're going into our third year of the CHIF Grant. So it's through Maine Health, used to be Lincoln Health, now it's Maine Health. Community Health Improvement Fund. Um, it's used to fund things like volleyball net and that whole setup so we can have a volleyball team, outing club, uh after-school programming, Hardy Roots, um small projects that Stephen Puff wants to do with light gadgets, uh sound booth we just purchased off Facebook Marketplace. Um, so and then going into this year, again, funding our outing club. Uh, and then also, what were some other things? Journalism, Phil the Beast wants to do a journalism club type thing. And um maybe even some playground equipment. I put a question mark on my report for that because I have to run it by, you know, John Mary. Um, so what what they do every year is they give me a a lauded amount that I can apply up to. So this year they have allotted forty thousand dollars. Last year I think we, I wrote enough grants, kind of like thirty-five thousand dollars. So um either, and when I write these grants, like uh Stephen Puff has a request now for like twelve hundred dollars for an engineering project. So
for an engineering project, so maybe you could give me permission to apply for grants within the forty thousand, even though some might be less than five thousand, some might be more than five thousand, but it falls within the forty thousand. Because when I submit an application, in the application, it could be funding different things, so outing club might be ten thousand, and then the engineering project might be fifteen hundred, but it's all one application, so different amounts for different things, so. I could apply for all forty and, you know, divide up all the projects we're gonna do this year. So that's that, and speaking of community engagement, um, once a year, those, uh, who are recipients of the CHIF Fund, Muscassette Community Center will be, see, we see those funds starting this year, um, I'm always asked to present because we do a lot with community partners, and so they, they think we're doing a great job with that. So, any questions? I'm gonna go back to Integrated Consolidated Nine through Sixteen Educational Facilities Program. We are voting to ask him to start the first step in that process, so we see if we're even remotely eligible for said grant. Do I have a, okay, double make a motion, do I have any second for that?
I would second that one.
So, um, do we have discussion around that?
I guess my discussion, we are getting ahead of ourselves pursuing that, we don't even, we have, you know, select boards' future schools recommendations.
Well, and that's why I wanted to be sure that we can just be like, oh, okay.
It's not, it's not binding, yeah.
That's not what we're.
I'm saying, if we don't even, if we get the recommendation, we review, and we decide we're not gonna.
Yeah, this is.
Right, well, who knows, isn't gonna be an option, during a point, if we decide we're not gonna pursue this at all. This, now, they're gonna, you have to apply by October, so it's not gonna be a quick thing, we don't know if we're into a nine through sixteen, or regional anxiety, or anything.
Well, this is just step one of a two-step process, so the first step is just to see if this would be, if it would be eligible. And so the state's gonna pull weeds, right, they're gonna get a bunch of applications, and they're gonna weed them out. Um, it doesn't mean that you're doing step two, so you get to come back and decide, you know, when you get the state's decision, if they say like, yes, you're eligible, then you can decide again if you want to.
And by that point, we'll have the recommendation from the select board, and we will have a lot more information around that. So my concern is I don't wanna miss the deadline for application, and then have the select board come to us and say, hey, you should move forward with these things, and us not have that information in place. Um, and also, if they come forward, and they're like, you should do the nine through sixteen, and we already know that we've been weeded out, then we can come back with the, well, we've already taken that first step, and Muscassette is not eligible for this particular way to move forward, so these are some of the other options.
Well, and they're not mutually exclusive.
I don't think so.
I mean, it's a rather ambitious, we think that we don't have, of course, we will keep the tech center and combine RSU.
You wouldn't do both, I think it would be a new, like, if you.
Well, but this, but this is all great, not in the top, right, we're still moving it, what happens to you?
Or would we?
Yeah, we might.
And if it's only vocational, like, it's not for general students, right?
No, it is, it would be a comprehensive high school that had a tech center, so kind of like what Morse is or what Coney is with the tech center, but also available for college. It's a whole other thing.
I'm not against the program, it's, it's the one thing that, that future of CHIF, the future of Muscassette, who's didn't pursue the investigation, I don't think they're about it. But that's the one time I'm applying for a grant for.
Honestly, basically, it gives us some.
It's all the same people, right?
Doesn't permit us to, that, that maybe it's all that, we're unopened one, we won't want to apply to. So it gives us information, that much for a layer.
And it is sort of one of the things that we, I mean, it falls in the umbrella of that consolidation piece. It's just, it's an add-on to that, I agree, but it does still fall under that umbrella, and I, once again, I'd rather go from a place of having more information than, that's my personal opinion, I'm not trying to tell anybody I had a vote, um. My thought process is, I want all the information on the table before we have to make a decision. I don't wanna be scrambling, trying to figure out what is available to us if we get handed. We should, looking at consolidating. Right.
What were the other options, though, that's my, that's my question, we're, we're rushing for a deadline for this program, whether we're regionalized, or RSU.
What I'm saying is, we're not committed to anything, we're just trying to get the information, what you want about, about eligible. And then we can make that decision, say, well, that's not gonna happen, we're not gonna take it, we're eligible, because by then we would get under options.
Yeah, I'm okay seeing if we're, if we're eligible, I just, I'd like to have all the information about the program, what it looks like, the, the families, the parents, before we.
Oh, yeah, no, I want, uh, this would be the first step of a whole lot before we would dive into any of this stuff.
Not to, not to pursue this.
Right.
Just, I've never even heard of this or seen it before tonight, before I come to the agenda, so I don't want it to be perceived by the public that we're moving this direction because of what we're applying for this, it's just, it's a simple exploratory.
We talked about it last, a little bit.
It's an exploratory.
Uh, yes.
See if we're eligible.
We have.
I, well, to Jonathan's point, he's obviously blindsided by this, uh, this is a two-part process. Where's the plan? You're applying for something, what towns are, I mean, there's obviously a plan, because you're pushing something to the state to have a plan, so you're voting on something that you don't even have any documents in front of you on this. So this is giving the superintendent free rein to do whatever she needs to push forward to this grant.
I don't think we'll get them anyway, so I'm fine if you vote them, like, they already told me.
They told you, Roger?
A year, sure, I reported this out to you a year ago.
Just a clarification, the deadline for this grant is October, what?
I don't know, October thirty first.
October thirty first.
And to clarify, it's not a grant, just so you know.
It's not a grant?
No. But they would, the state would pay.
We've been letting believe that it's a grant, so clearly, we don't even know what this is. If we're saying it's a grant, we're applying for something, typically you apply for a grant, it's underneath the grant, it's a new business, so I don't know what it is.
Like, I guess it's a grant.
My, my point, sorry, but my, my point is, nobody here in this room really knows what this is really about, except for Kim. Sounds like Kim has a plan.
Actually, this comes from some of the ad hoc meetings that have happened around the area, and this has been forwarded to us from other people.
Interesting.
Because when I brought it to Kim, because I want this out, I want this to be public. We shouldn't be having ad hoc meetings, we should be having a group that sits down, and we appoint people, and we discuss all of the things in public, this is how this would go or not. And so my concern, as I was hearing about meetings, was if this is a direction that we want to go in, or that people are talking about going in, I want it thrown out on the table here at the school board as, okay, we need to apply for this, we need to see what all the criteria are, we need to see if we even remotely want this. But right now, we don't have any of that information, so if this is the first step to get all of that information, that's what I want to do, and that's what I was looking at.
The first step is, let's see if we're eligible, it would sound like, can we get all that information before we vote to go that direction? Or they're saying you have to apply, and then we'll take the programs.
Yeah.
It's like voting on a bill before you know what's in it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, and that's why, like I said, I want to know, can we look at this and go, no? Can we be done with it?
It's not binding, it's like sending in a job application, and you could decide whether or not you take the job.
Mm-hmm.
Which is, I mean, I feel perfectly comfortable saying, yeah, shoot, throw our hat in the ring, because, you know, by the time they make a decision, it'll be months in the future, we'll have more information on the future of the school situation, we'll have more information about the program itself, we'll know if we even qualify, um, and it just adds another option to our potential future options for our students.
I'm, I guess.
It's non-binding, like, the step we're voting on tonight is non-binding, so I feel completely comfortable with that.
Is, is there no other schools doing this yet, this program?
I don't know.
There are other schools who, uh, in fact, tonight, Bob Kaler was authorized by his board to, to be able to talk to me about this. Um, so that's another school that's doing it. A year ago, I was told, but, so Bob Howley and I went to the state a year ago to find out more about it, because it's a neat opportunity, and it would be wonderful to have a technical school in Muscassette, a brand-new facility. It would be wonderful if we could create a tri-region tech center exchange, where the kids could go, the option for Coney, Morse, and Muscassette in this huge catchment area, and we could provide more tech training to more students in more, uh, the areas. Uh, but at that time, a year ago, the state said, we're not, we're not gonna put another tech building, a seventy-million-dollar project into the midcoast, you've already got multiple tech centers. We're looking at the undesigned territories, and I reported that out to this board last, either July or August.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I was disappointed, but the community has not let go of the idea, because they won't come out and say, no, don't apply for it. And then in the spring, in about April, they sent out a priority notice and said, we're changing the application into a two-step process, the first step is get your partners together, get your municipal authorities, school authorities to sign off that you're willing to do this work, and then send it in to us, and we'll, we'll either approve it or disapprove it. And that's, that's where we are right now, so I haven't thought about it or talked about it since last summer. But I'm aware that there are community members from multiple towns, and, and select board people from multiple towns who have been meeting, um, some months, and they would like, they would like this to become a more formal process. No one can apply for it except the school superintendents, so that's, you know.
And we have to give that approval.
Right, unless we can't know what this program looks like, it sounds like other people know what it looks like, it's.
I haven't been to any of those meetings.
Not, not, you know, I'm not talking to the community, there's community members meeting, discussing it, talking about it, they don't, they kind, they kind of know what it looks like.
We have, we have corporate people. Ted?
Uh, yeah, just, it would be really wonderful to have all these things, it would be really wonderful if the school board and the school, my child's going into kindergarten, he doesn't even know his, his kindergarten teacher, because there's so many special students here, that they haven't divided up the kindergarten classes yet. But we're worried about a nine-through-sixteen school, what are we doing? What are we doing? Sorry?
I just wanna ask the question again, with, uh, October thirty first is the deadline, or what, what is the deadline for exactly? Can we have some clarification, actually, the board should have clarification, what are you exactly applying for? What are you, what are you getting approval to do? If it's not money, there's no, uh, there's no commitment, you're just saying, sure? Is that, why are you really doing sure?
The approval is, my understanding is the approval is to move forward with actually meeting and setting up a public forum with a public committee that can then discuss what the implications are of this kind of program for our community. Because right now, there are little ad hoc groups that are doing this, and they're all over the board, and we're the people that make this decision, not them, and so I want it to be done in an official capacity, so that we can actually get that information in public, put together a committee of the people necessary, so that we can look at it and go, is this even feasible for us, is this something we even want to do? Is this, you know, is this pie in the sky, is that, what is this? But until we can set up, until we get approval, and until we start talking to other schools, we can't do any of that, so we're just having little private meetings with groups around town that think, this is a great idea! School board should do this, okay, yeah, okay, but I don't know how to do it, I don't know who we talk to, I don't have any background. I need to have steps in place, and this seems to be the first step in that process.
If it helps you at all, the Booth Bay Board that voted tonight, the school board, they too did not know about the project either, they're just like you. And what they did was they authorized their superintendent just to speak to your superintendent, to learn about it, to see if people wanna work together, and from there, they're hoping it would stem out with more additional information. The boards would get information, you'd make it form committees, and then it would decide whether they wanna really work together or not. And then if they do, we've got out some of the info, and then it could move on to the application part. So I think that's what you're looking to do.
Right, and that's what we're asking for the super.
Yeah, so it's authorizing the superintendent to talk.
Yes, and asking for the authorization to work.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so.
Absolutely, I think we should explore, get more information.
Yes, and that's, that's what I'm asking.
Different words, different words.
That's what this is.
Yes, let's apply for this, what do you want?
Yes, why would you do that?
Well, I'm asking you to give me permission to apply for it, I'm asking to authorize me to apply, I'll decide. Like, we're not there yet for all of these, like, CHIF one, we're not there yet, we're not there yet, for the School Revolving Fund, we don't have the report from the architect, but I do need your authorization, that's what the policy says.
Right, and then it would come back to us when we were actually going to apply, if we were even eligible.
For this one?
Yes.
I'm okay with authorizing superintendents to talk about the program, get more information to present to their individual boards, but it sounded like those conversations aren't had, we're just not aware of what information to share. I'm, I'm, as far as my personal, I'm not, I don't think we should apply for anything until we have all the information on what we're applying for.
It seems like it's sort of a no-cost thing, I quite liked your analogy, that it's like applying for a job, you're not committing to it just by submitting an application, and, uh, you know, the cost to you was some keyboard time and however many minutes or hours of toil to submit an application for a grant, so.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't apply for a job unless I knew what it was, what it entailed, and if I was interested before I applied. Even though that was costing me anything, I did my research first.
Actually, yeah, with AI now, you're probably applying to things, I, I got a job offer from Time Warner just the other day.
Alright, so do we want to change this then, from saying, "application for grant," because we can amend this, into, we are authorizing Kim to meet with the superintendent from Booth Bay to start this process?
Or others.
And she will bring, I'm sorry?
Add others to it, not just us.
And others.
Specifically just has superintendent, the others.
Yes, right, other superintendents, and.
Yes, all the superintendents.
Yes. Right, so that would be a better way to word this at this time, and then.
Because we have to apply by October thirty first.
Right, so September meeting, you can come back with information, and then at that point, we could, if we want to.
Well, we could just end it right now.
I'm all in on the information for it, I don't wanna say yes or no, unless I have more information, but that's, I'm one person's.
Right, and frankly, that's what I want, like I said, I want it out in the public forum, I don't want it to be.
The school board.
Right, the school board should know, we're the ones that make that decision. Uh-huh, yes.
If we're back to the MSBA train before, I will support the board's decision, if three, four people wanna forward the application, I, I'll support the majority's decision, I just, that's my personal thought.
But I think it's, I think it would be fine to take that one step back, we can authorize Kim to talk to other area superintendents, to see interest level, and to get us more information around all of this. Right.
So I'll do a small presentation next meeting, and then, and it'll make, I can, or be a better forum.
Now, can we authorize Kim to talk to other area superintendents, so that if.
Do you need to authorize that, or can she just, that's her role, can she just talk to other superintendents? I'm okay.
Well, I think we need to authorize her to do this particular piece, because I, I feel like this is a first step in some, in a process, and like I said, I feel like we need to have a process in place for whatever moves we're going to make in the future. And I want to set those processes in place, and I wanna get, I, I want it in public forum, I want it out there, so that we are, we are meeting and getting input, so. So I guess we need to amend this first piece, so that it would be, we are actually asking, how would we word that, I guess?
See, the first motion was Doug motion to authorize Kim to talk about specifics.
Okay.
That was the first motion, she's second.
Okay, so instead of it being the grant, we have Doug asking, or motioning for Kim to authorize, you're authorizing Kim to get specifics. Beautiful, does anyone have any other discussion around that? Are we all comfortable with that? Alright, all in favor? Beautiful, thank you. Alright. School Revolving Renovation Fund, so that would be the, um, front vestibules for safety and reworking of our, um, offices to optimize their use.
I have moved to authorize the superintendent to submit that request. I have a move to authorize superintendent to submit that request.
Do I have a second on that?
I will second.
Victoria will second that. Do I have discussion around that one?
My only question, a couple of questions all kind of together. The detail of the grant, is there a matching funds requirement from the school? Is there a payment needed?
No.
There's specific requirements for the grant?
It's gotta be, it's gotta fall under school safety and ADA. Those are two areas that we're looking at, ADA compliance and we're not ADA compliant in either building. So that, yeah, hopefully we get a roll of our bathrooms and.
So other than the, so the requirement for the grant would be, we'll give you the money, you have to use the school safety or ADA.
We would complete an application. So step one, we've already done. And it was to have the architect come and redrawn. This is an architect who works with the DOE all the time, so he knows what they're looking for. He'll put together his proposal, we'll put, feed it into our proposal and submit the grant to rolling applications. I don't have a clue how much that will cost to do those projects, so I'm waiting for the estimate. Yeah, it'll be a lot.
Right, what, how?
But it's not gonna be seventy million dollars, right? Like the state just did a seventy million dollar school down somewhere. And this, this wouldn't be that, this is a small part of my.
Incorporate the. Homeland Security taking in your, your, you know.
Yeah, well, what we talked about would be actually adding on to the front of this building.
Well, I, I mean, as far as that grant, if we're, right, we're gonna ask for specific money for specific things.
Yes.
That, that study we had done by Homeland Security. We could pull pieces out of Larry's saying for all the recommendations.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, my only question is, do we have to pay it back? We have to match the budget.
Nope.
Cost does anything?
Nope.
Is there a report back then on how we spent the money?
Yeah, lots of guidelines about how we procure things and bidding, yeah.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Do I have any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right, N B R C catalyst program.
Yeah, this is the pre-application, just to see if we would qualify. It would be a workforce development funding and I'm asking you to authorize me to see if we qualify for the second step. And that one's due at the end of August, August twenty ninth. Just this first step to see if you're eligible. So I could find out if we're eligible, learn more about it, and bring it back to us September, and then we can talk about it then.
Do you know what it requires on the physical space for this program?
What, yeah, what would we use it for?
Uh, I think I would use it towards the marine learning project and funding to support the spinner harpoon gammette sail training. And, and if we didn't get it, or if we got it and didn't want to use it for that, we would just turn it away. So it's one of these things where if we want to get in to get that money, we need to let them know now we're interested. We don't know a hundred percent what we would do with that money because the coalition of educators and mariners that was built over the past eight months of marine learning project is gonna get back together in September and debrief the program and make a plan for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year that's sustainable. And what, what's that gonna look like? So I have different ideas about what I think it should look like. But the end goal is to get as many kids around the state of Maine to access maritime education and potentially get into the marine industry. The owner of the boats, you know, his driving force is to increase employment. There are, there's a workforce shortage in the marine industries and sixty percent of Maine's gross product comes from the maritime industry. And Stacy Kiefer talks about how a common reaction from students is they, oh, I'm not interested in anything in shipping because I don't know how to swim. Like they don't really have even any sense of what their own maritime heritage is. And we see that, we see that all the time here right in the midcoast, so. It's not like there were a lot of sailors. It was a whole. That's to give out any other.
I was gonna say, so this program would be contingent upon our continued participation with the architect.
We have to write, I have to write an application and see if they would even look at us. And then, and then look at it really carefully. Because you may decide that you're not interested in marine learning project and you'll pull me back from that. With it, this is just allowing us to open the door should we decide to walk through it.
All right, so do I have a motion?
I motion to authorize N B R C catalyst grant.
Do I have a second? Just for seconds. Do I have any other questions or discussions around it? All in favor? Thank you. All right, new hires.
Do you want to authorize a grant?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Wait, you should take it super personally, Sarah. Completely overlooked that.
I'll motion.
You'll motion to accept chip grants. Do I have a second for that? Second, do I have discussion around that? Now we.
I'm also, it's the same thing we've already been using, it's not exchange with the other grant.
All right.
Go get him, Tiger.
All right, so no discussion, all in favor? There we go. Sorry, I overlooked it. All right, new hires.
Kimberly.
Kimberly Bensley.
Yeah. Yeah, and because it was summer, I have already hired her.
Somebody in front of you.
Excuse me, Mr. Earl.
Yes.
All right. Don't need to do anything on that one, but welcome Kimberly. Opening day staff appreciation, Doug.
I think the staff holds it over. The board should recognize the staff. Thank them for all the hard work they did. Really, they're the asset.
Absolutely.
We really appreciate you so much, you're the priority. We appreciate it.
And you mentioned breakfast on one of the days, you know, on the vacation days. That's on the board. They asked for input or we have representatives from the board, if not the entire board, attending that just to.
Or one of the other things I thought of, just because I know those days are crazy busy from a teacher standpoint. And I also know that teachers like snacks. I thought it might be nice if we, as a board, I will go up to Sam's, we'll get a couple of big platters of cookies. We bring them here for their, for their orientation and all the rest, so that they have a snack for midday. And if you all want to send me a little blurb of appreciation to them, I can attach that to it. And then that way, when their timing strikes, so that they have the time to enjoy it, it will be there from us. Does that sound like an appropriate appreciation?
Is that your thoughts or just, because it's just a gesture from the board. I don't want to compete.
Right, yeah.
Teachers love snacks.
And teachers too love snacks.
They love it, they love it.
And so to add tax and be so the end and.
And so do absolutely everybody loves snacks.
And I always feel most appreciate my work with this community.
So does that work for you? Because when I saw that, I was, oh, I, oh. Absolutely. Absolutely. So if everybody wants to send me something you would like to say to them between now and the twenty-eighth? Give, give it to me before the twenty-eighth.
Of August?
Of August. And I will get that put together for us and I will go and get cookies from us. Thank you.
That's what I'm thinking.
So somebody expecting it. Yes, you'll get cookies.
We don't look for them now.
All right, distribution of draft school community calendar.
We did that.
We did that already.
Yeah.
Oh, jeez, I'm so sorry.
I think you caught my presence.
I don't have any.
I'm, I'm. Please forgive me, everybody.
I put that on there so that I don't forget.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna like leave it on the agenda and never forget.
All right, so field trips, we don't have any coming up. Student handbooks, elementary school.
Is there, is there draft approval please tonight? Is it?
It's up to you guys.
Look at it through our next meeting? I'm looking at it all year. Let me just look real quick. Is this one, is this draft like bolded with the changes, the red line, like all through the years? Or do I just?
I don't know. Are the changes in bold or anything so that we can see?
No, there's not a ton of changes. So we just updated part of attendance in my letter. The procedure for drop-off pickup is slightly different. The staff is updated. And those are really only the, the only real changes.
Does the staff have a chance to look at it to see if they have?
Nope, nope. Um, I also didn't want to change the picture, but we couldn't like find a beautiful picture of the sunset fast enough. So if we do find that there are things that need to be changed, we can at least, you know, bring another draft to you with a prettier picture.
I have a little bit of a challenge with that.
Yeah, I think that's what we're waiting for.
I know, I could, I'm sorry, I keep.
Absolutely, so.
That's why this is a picture.
With the caveat that they're probably gonna distribute them to students and families before.
Any new changes?
So I'm gonna say, I label this as draft like we did with the others.
I definitely like to get it.
So if we label this as a draft and then we'll have the finalized one after our next meeting. Does that work for you guys?
They distribute it to the families, students, like right now?
Right, like as a draft.
As a draft.
Then you can just say pending school board approval on whatever the date is. So that that way we've completed that circle.
We're not waiting on them, they're not waiting on them.
Right.
That's great, thanks.
Does that work? So for both of those, same with the high school, beautiful. All right, policies. You have your first policy reads. It's I J O A field trips and excursion policy or procedure. Um, I K O A R field trips and excursion procedures. I K O C school volunteers. I K O C R volunteers administrative procedures. I K O C E one volunteer agreement form. I K O C E two, school volunteers authority to release information. I K O C E three, volunteer application form. E E A E A A. Drug and alcohol testing of school bus drivers. And B E, school board meetings. So those will be the ones we will be going over and be providing you all with second reads that we will vote on to put into place. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve these as first reads?
I have a motion to approve these first reads.
And Jonathan will second. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the policies that we will be doing? Yes, Christopher, you look like you're thinking.
I don't know how this works.
Okay, um, so what happens is these policies here were the ones that we in our last policy meeting decided were the most urgent that we needed to look at. Uh, so this, the first reading is what you see before, you can look them up in our policies. These are what is stated right now as policy. What we will do then is Victoria and I will go through them and we will look at those policies. We will revamp them as we see the needs for the community, as we see if there's something that's come down the pipe law-wise or usually we get a heads up about that. And so then we reword it depending on the need. And then it gets brought back to you. As Jonathan says, any changes we make will be in like a different color so that you can see the difference between the two. And then at that point, we vote on them. And then once we vote on them, the colors go away and they become what we then have for our policy. So, sorry, I should have explained that. No, that's all right. No, that's fine. So I have a motion, I have a second. Are there any other questions around policy? All in favor of accepting these as first reads? Okay, thank you. Public comment.
Anybody want to say anything?
I have a question.
You have a question?
Mr. Royal, his question involved room assignments. When could we expect an answer to that?
Yeah, so kindergarten is doing a kindergarten boot camp for the first two weeks of school. So all the students will be all together with both teachers. And it's for a couple reasons. We often get students late for kindergarten. And so instead of doing classless and not really knowing the kids when we're making those classes, we're waiting to get them all together, get them through the routines together, and then they'll separate to the classes. The other thing too is that the class itself is really small. So some of the time they're gonna be all together. The classrooms work together a lot, so literacy rotations are a great example of that. Where small groups will maybe see both teachers in a rotation. So they really want to get the kids comfortable with each other and both teachers and be able to pull and balance the classes after they get to know the kids a little bit.
Doug?
Could I answer your question?
I don't know, because I've been through this before. My child should have a physical teacher on day one when he's coming into this school. I have a fourth grader in this school. He went to kindergarten, he got an update. He's all excited about coming into school. And he has a physical teacher to turn to. This is his teacher. So what, why is this changed? Why has the dynamic changed?
It's, it's only a change for kindergarten.
Yeah, correct, but it's changed within four years.
Yeah, it's, I mean, this is the reasons that I just explained it to you. It's there, there's small groups that are trying to identify the needs early. And they'll have both teachers. And there's two at tax that'll be working in kindergarten, who's a collection.
But he has a, he should have, as a kindergarten student, he should have a homeroom classroom.
I mean, he will after the, the two weeks.
But why the?
Inconsistency is key.
Consistency for kindergarten. We're talking about five-year-olds. So what, who changed this dynamic of not having, I know Welch has their teachers passed out to the kindergarten classrooms. So who changed this dynamic?
Maybe we should all reflect and go back to the first day we went to school, five years old. You know, it was pretty scary going to school first day and learning new people. And it was pretty tough just learning who was gonna get on the right bus. Though I figured he'd get on the wrong bus. Those faces that you learn day one. What I'm understanding, and this is, I worked with this guy every day, this is the first time I've heard of him. So it's, it's, that's a little concerning to me as well. So I'm gonna chime in as well, that that's a five-year-old stu- student.
Mind you, this is also, I'll bring this up because it's a small setting. My child has a severe, severe allergy to tree nuts. Have not heard a word from anybody all summer about that. A plan in place for this.
So what I'm going to suggest is Stacy, will you please reach out and?
And I'm not blaming Stacy.
Yeah, no, I, I know you're not, this, I, I can hear that. I think that what needs to happen is Stacy, you need to recount, my suggestion. Recount, please connect. Maybe do, show the space, talk about the steps. And then if, if there's still concern, you know, let's, yes.
We have a crowd here, we never, we never have a big public showing if we don't.
Right.
I can't imagine other parents aren't feeling the same way.
Right.
We not have like a kindergarten orientation day, week portion starts, week portion starts.
Do we, do we have a kindergarten?
Yeah, we do, okay.
We at least meet the two teachers, meet the two attacks.
Yep, on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Kindergarten orientation without eleven on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I mean, there's specific assignment, at least they'll have to build, they'll know Mr. So-and-so, Mr. So-and-so. They know exactly.
Yep, they'll meet both teachers.
This is your safety, all this is your teacher, this is who they're coming to see.
Right, wonderful.
All right, so if you would recount and meet and then see where that goes from there, but I'm, I'm sure that once, yes, sorry.
Yeah, I, I would like to respond to the tree nut allergy. So that potentially falls under a specific plan and my office handles those. So if you filled out the paperwork and you put that on your paperwork, then.
I did about six months ago.
Okay, well, the nurse would reach, should be reaching out to our, I work all summer. The nurse is doing.
And I'm not, listen, I'm not blaming the staff.
No.
It's, this is, this is why we don't need a nine through sixteen school. This school is failing, okay? And we keep smoothing stuff over, okay? We don't, a kindergarten, a five-year-old needs to have a homeroom teacher. So whoever, I will get to the bottom of it, I will sit down with Stacy, so this. It's not the end of it, but.
But it takes care of his personal, but can we, can we discuss a quick something on the agenda?
But in terms of the allergy, that.
Or the formatting of getting to school here? Because as a group, we can discuss what that's gonna look like.
I, I think that.
Not this year, but two and four.
Right, I think what we should do is. Right, I think what we should do is get feedback from the school itself as to what their format is. If that is a question that we have, because I would like to see what they have in place and then.
I think this, we've talked outside, but as a board, again, we put, I think surveys in general, we can discuss putting on next agenda. Surveys the staff, what works best for you guys, staff members surveys, families, as a parent, what would you like to see for beginning of school years? To get a collaborative process to have what that should look like. Because they're the experts in the field, what makes the big work, also we want the parents.
Well, yeah, we want parents to be.
So they feel comfortable.
Invested and involved, absolutely.
We can discuss that.
Absolutely, no, I agree. Um, all right, any other public comment?
Sorry, sorry, just a, just a couple of observations as, uh, once again, I'm gonna commend the board. This is productive, it's engaging. Thank you, thank you. But a couple of observations, my understanding that there was a policy committee meeting. I now understand that there's a finance committee meeting, sounds like there was a student retention committee meeting. The only one I was made aware, that I could actually find was a policy meeting. Am I wrong to believe that these are public meetings and they should be posted? Whose responsibility is it to post it on the website?
That's.
I don't know when the finance committee was, uh, yesterday. It was something on the website yesterday.
But that is. This has not been approved yet because we have to change the policy because we changed our dates, so.
Gotcha.
This will be posted as a draft that, and there'll be a note that'll say draft, um, pending um, school board, I'm losing words now, approval, there's the word I'm looking for.
But until then, we're not going to post them.
Well, it will be posted as of tonight.
I think by law, we have to have a public meeting, but post it on the school website and that wasn't done. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And I thought I understood that, Stacy, so I, I appreciate that. I understand we're working towards a calendar, perfect. Uh, the other observation that I had is it sounded like the board hired one new teacher tonight. But I was led to believe by some of these reports that there were several new teachers that were. Those were all last meeting, perfect.
Yep, I was just announcing who was coming in.
Wonderful, wonderful. So how many teachers are we still waiting to hire? I guess would be a logical question. Do we have, are we not fully staffed going into school year as a great?
That was in Kim's report.
I didn't hear anything of gifted and gifted and talented teachers.
Yeah, gifted and talented teacher. Kim had it in her.
Yeah, we never.
Intermark.
Yeah, interim art and then.
But everyone always uses the white cells.
I've got it.
Yeah, that's a whole other.
If that was in her report, I'll be able to see it online. I'll I'll get that information. And just for clarification.
Yep.
The the integrated consolidated nine sixteen education facilities program. Is the state not talking about a K through sixteen program? Why is the state, it has a nine through sixteen?
Because it's it's an industrialized program.
So this is different than what the state is pursuing in other areas, which is a K through sixteen, so this is different?
Yeah, I honestly, I do not know the answer to that, so.
Okay, so hopefully that.
That will be some of the information we'll get more of.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed the way you guys have discussions and work through things and how many questions we ask. It's wonderful. I mean, when we look at stuff in booth day, they keep people applying for grants and they had somebody get a rope, like a rope course or something. And of course, the people were saying, well, how much does it cost to maintain that? And we didn't know you're getting it and what, you know, land you need. So it's really good that the board is engaging on that part of the grant world, so I know it must be hard to wait for the answer, but it's a great system you guys have in place. The other is that do not fret about this nine through sixteen thing. It's, the way I would look at it is who knows if we're gonna get it or what it entails, but one of the requirements as they move forward after the two talk is you have to have town managers and selectmen and teachers and parents and school board and lots of people in the room before they can even apply. It's one of the criteria.
Right, and that's, that's where I want to get to. That's the piece that I was talking about. It probably wasn't terribly clear at the time. I'm sorry.
But it'll get communities talking, which is the really great outcome of this, with everyone in one room and see if that even sounds like an idea.
Right.
So thank you for looking at doing that. You guys have a good system going. Good job by you. I hope you guys enjoy the rest of the school year.
Are you from the booth people?
Um, no, I'm just a booth day resident, so and I've just been like, I'm a fangirl of schools, so I kinda like going around.
I was like, you know what you're talking about.
I've been doing it a long time. Those are cool. And they're evolving all the time.
Well, that's how I just.
Cool, is that cool?
Um.
Oh, wait, we're now public comment.
Okay, are we done with public comment? Do I have any other? Okay, um.
Yeah, one information.
Yes.
Standing committees, maybe yes, the superintendent researches statutes on standing committees in public involvement. More so for the safety committees purposes, there's gonna be stuff we discussed there that means it may be confidential.
Absolutely.
But if statute says standing committees have to have public dependents, as a board, we want to discuss this not standing committee or if we revise that.
You're gonna do executive sessions?
That's what you do.
Um, we will.
Yeah.
Right, we'll come, like anything safety related, we report back in a public session, but next.
Details.
Confidential stuff, we go to executive session.
Yes.
But these safety committees, I feel like there's gonna be brainstormers, gonna be talking, there's gonna be, maybe we'll do this.
Uh huh.
Maybe if we have an active shooter, this is where we want the kids to go, stuff that may.
Those things should be confidential.
Maybe, yeah, some of that stuff may be confidential. We don't want public, all the public knowing specifically for safety reasons.
Right.
But I don't know, if we get more research on at least the safety, maybe it's not a safety.
Yeah.
As there's no statute around safety, I don't know if it's called safety committee, but I'm not sure we, we should get it brought back.
Yes. Absolutely, thank you.
To you, we should get the number. Doesn't necessarily have to be something that we, if you research that.
Yeah, great idea. Beautiful, thank you. All right, at this time, I need a motion to move into executive session. Would you please read off what was we said this was going to be?
I'll make an emotion for go to executive session pursuant to M R S A four, five, six, A employment of officials appointees, please.
I'll second that motion. One said, I don't want to repeat it.
Do I have any discussion around that? All right, all in favor? Thank you, and thank you everyone for coming tonight.
Thank you. We're gonna stay right here. I'm gonna end this. Stacy, thank you. This is so cute. To any viewers that are out there, we are ending the live stream at this time and will not be coming back. We'll just adjourn after this.
Yes, yes.